Okay, we are on. Thanks everybody for showing up tonight. It's May 2nd, 2019. This is a meeting of the New Market School Board. We're gonna begin our meeting as we do usually with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna start out with public comment, if anybody has one. None? Okay.
Long day.
That's alright.
Hi, Joanne Lass, I represent the New Market Teachers Association.
Hi, Joanne.
So, we really appreciate that the school board have taken time to go through the different policies and updating them and bringing them along. And we're a little, we have a concern about why the first policy listed for the first reading tonight, IA, instructional bills, why this policy is actually being carried over. It's, I mean, the premise of it is admirable.
But the language of it is pretty antiquated. It even talks, for example, in number 12, we're preparing the worker in an intelligent discipline in economic life. Besides, never mind the gender-specific items within it. It just doesn't read as something that we're looking at the 21st century on. So we'd like to bring your attention to that policy about possibly removing it.
So I actually had that one tagged also.
Okay, great. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, we're gonna go into a couple of very worthy recognitions. First, the National Technical Honor Society inductees. If they could step up. Yeah. So, I mean, I can do this introduction. Would you rather give your name and grade and what you, what you learned as a National Honor Society inductee, or what got you there?
Sure.
Okay. Hi, I'm Zoe Paps. I'm a senior from New York High School and I take marketing at Seco School Technology. And being inducted into the National Technical Honor Society has really taught me a lot about how it is to be in a community and to be respectful in a classroom and respect others, so.
My name's Alexa Palashano. I'm in the Health Sciences Program. I'm a senior. And being a National Honor Society, or the National Technical Honor Society for my program, has taught me a lot about respecting the residents in the nursing home and the medical field and always doing what's best for them.
And you two are seniors, correct?
Yes.
And do you have plans?
I'm going to the University of Tampa for nursing.
Great.
And I'm going to West Virginia University for marketing.
My name is Alyssa Lebec and I'm also a senior. And I am involved in the Health Sciences Program at SST. And what I have learned from being inducted into the National Technical Honor Society is how, as a whole, extraordinary like the opportunity is for all of us and what we've been able to accomplish there. And next year, I'm attending Endicott College for nursing.
Great. Good job.
My name's Michaela Hartman and I'm...
We don't...
Oh. I know. And I'm doing the engineering program at the Seco School of Technology. Being inducted into National Technical Honor Society just shows the immense group of engineers and people interested in these technical careers coming together and just being recognized. So I think that's wonderful.
You've got a couple of years before you go anywhere.
Yeah, yeah. Two more.
Hi, I'm Sierra Yim. I'm a sophomore at New York High School and I'm also in the pre-engineering program at SST. And being in the National Technical Honor Society has taught me a lot about hard work and dedication. And, yeah, I think that it's a really cool society to be a part of, so.
So Sierra, Michaela, that robot presentation was out of this world. It was one of the best moments in the past year. Everybody really enjoyed it. That was so neat. Great. There's some others who aren't here with us tonight. I'm just gonna read off some names and so they get recognized as well. Josh Mastin was inducted for automotive technologies. Anna Childs for biomedical science and technology. Brian McKenny for computer science. Donovan Foltz for digital media arts. Isabella, Isabella Santarano for health, science technologies. I'm gonna torture this one. Sarah W. for marketing. For marketing technologies. And Josh Samuelson for pre-engineering. Thank you all very much for coming tonight. Congratulations.
There should be enough for them.
I'll get a nap. Next up is Model UN team. They got a presentation for us. Do you guys wanna introduce yourselves while we're waiting? Come up to the...
Come to the microphone, so people at home can hear you.
You're used to this. You gave your Model UN.
I'm doing this now?
Just introduce yourself.
Alright. I'm Brendan Barnes. I'm a junior at New Market High School and this is my second year of Model UN.
Welcome, Brendan. Okay, okay.
I'm Mohamed Tajiev. I'm a senior at New Market High School.
Senior Mohamed?
I'm Zoe McGurk. I'm a sophomore at New York High School. I've been in Model UN for two years as well.
I'm Ben LeBeau. I'm a senior at the high school and I've been in Model UN for two years.
Thanks, Ben.
I'm Taylor Kennison. I'm a sophomore at New Market High School and this is my second year in Model UN. Sierra Yim, I was already up here. And this is also my second year in Model UN.
Great. Look at that trophy. What's, can I jump forward a little bit? What's the trophy for?
So, we attended a four-day conference in Philadelphia and our team won best small school out of 70 teams there. So, this is a whole team trophy. And then we also got a couple other awards, Mohamed and Taylor. You guys wanna talk about what you guys got? And what your committee you were in, something like that?
Sure. So Mohamed and I, we represented Venezuela at Philadelphia in the Human Rights Council. And do you wanna talk about the subjects we talked about in the Human Rights Council?
Yeah. So, we talked about different international, the problems that we had, like especially this conference focused on Eastern Europe, Eastern European problems, for example, human trafficking in Kosovo and discrimination against Roman people in Eastern Europe area. We talked about this stuff like for three days and tried to come up with some solutions to the problems, which is international problems and we concerned about this stuff as a global citizen. So, we talked about it and we had a good resolution papers and we were awarded as an outstanding delegate award, me and Taylor.
How many delegates you think were in your committee?
There were at least, there were nine to eight people, but like there were two, like everybody was in two people team. So it was like forty, forty-eight teams.
Yeah, an outstanding delegate is a very hard award to win, especially at that four-day conference with being an inexperienced-ish school compared to some of these New York teams, so.
Right. Why not, so?
So I'm president of Model United Nations. We formed the club last year in the spring and we attended our first conference that May. Taylor, do you wanna talk about what Model UN is?
Yeah, so Model UN is an after-school activity where students can learn about the United Nations diplomacy and international relations. So, if you're interested in that, politics, or just the UN, it's a really good opportunity for you.
So, some of the skills that you can learn in Model UN are things like leadership, public speaking, and research and writing skills, as well as collaborating with other people who you may not have met before during conferences and sort of playing your roles and sticking to what your country sort of believes. And, yeah, staying true to your research and stuff.
So, we've gone to several conferences and represented a lot of countries. And my favorite was probably representing Venezuela. I was also with Ben, we were partners. And that was at Philadelphia in February. And it was really interesting, interesting being the bad guy for once 'cause you had to act your role. And even if you wanted to work diplomatic, like, you know, practice diplomacy with other nations, you still had to be that, like, you had to fight against them because you wanted to actually be Venezuela. So that was really interesting. But, yeah, Model UN has taught me a lot about diplomacy, working with other people. I've researched a lot of countries and learned a lot about them and politics and how the world operates, like the UN itself. And I've learned a lot about writing, 'cause it's helped me with other classes as well and public speaking. And, yeah, it helps teach me how to function in a formal environment too, because you don't really have many opportunities to do that other than with like Model UN.
So I don't wanna scare you thunder, but can you talk a little bit about, I mean, it's not just writing a paper. I mean, they throw curveballs at you during the, during the whole event, right? I mean, you get called in the middle of the night for a crisis that's happening.
Yeah, so that was, Sierra, did you guys get that too?
Yeah. So there were, so I was Kazakhstan on the Security Council. It was a crisis committee. There was about 15 countries there. And we were focusing on counterterrorism. So one night they woke me up and they said, "The Chechenians just came into Russia and they were attacking citizens. What can you do?" So at that point, we stayed up till about 3:00 AM that morning, trying to figure out the best way to combat that situation as we had Russia there, China there, the United States and the UK voting separate ways on every single thing we proposed. So that was really fun. And Sierra, do you wanna talk about what you guys did?
So, my, I represented the Republic of Turkey. And for our midnight crisis, we had that the Soviet Union, I believe, invaded Yugoslavia. And so, like Michaela, I was woken up at 1:00 AM-ish and then we had to go down and resolve that before we could go to bed. So, I had, yeah. It was a bit challenging to work that out in such a short amount of time because it was also more of a time constraint. But, yeah, it was really fun. That was one of the highlights of the conference, so.
And that, I mean, that's a really, really UN because they don't have those hours designated to wake up and go to bed and stuff like that. If something happens, the crisis is there and they have to fix that. So it's true to the UN itself. And then I guess just group-wise, we think fundraising really hard to attend all these conferences. Obviously Philly was a four-day, one-night thing, so that was a really big one for us. But we received a huge scholarship from the conference itself to attend and that allowed us to go. We've also attended Phillips Exeter with help from Oyster Rivers team. We fundraised together. And then UNH we've attended, we'll attend them Saturday. We did that last year too. And then the UNH team, I just wanna recognize them because they've been guiding us through all of this significantly, so that's awesome. And then our awards, we got best small school, best, outstanding delegate, and we have some position paper awards. And then also a huge thank you to our advisors, Miss Toad, Miss McDonald, who are there on those overnight trips and always supporting us in our crazy, fun times.
Yeah. Thanks to, thanks to both of those gentlemen.
I did one thing here, so, because I think that that's important. So, the life may not be known here. I'm an exchange student. And I'm coming from like huge city, like 3 million people. And our schools are really large. Like I came to New Market and I was looking for different activities because I was here for connections and for new participations. And I found the Model United Nations. I said, "Oh, it's a good fit." Because like with Model United Nations, I heard it back home, but I never participated in it. And then I talked to Michaela and I got involved in it. And I really liked it. Like, they helped me, like, whole team helped me to understand what it really is and how to write position papers. And in the short amount of time, we succeeded, worked well. And I think that for small school like New Market, it's really important to have activities like this, special Model United Nations, even though I'm gonna leave soon, but I want to, I want New Market to have this club and expand it more and more for advancement and improvement of kids, like in terms of like everything you practice, your like public speaking skills and other public diplomacy and stuff. And you also learn about many, about many countries. You learn about like what's happening in the world. I think this is really important to focus on if you want to learn about the world and about different cultures. So that was just what I wanted to say.
Ben's ready to go? Is there a...
That's it?
That's it?
It was on while we were talking.
Thank you so much.
I have a suggestion.
Uh-oh.
Sound like my wife. I think we should send you guys down to Washington and speak before the Congress and talk about accessibility and the learning and the listening. Apparently you enjoy this part of it as well. I mean, I wish the attitudes that we see in our government reflected of the kind of interest, concern, and learning that you guys have all done. I think it's true.
Well, set out.
It's great. Thank you guys for coming and sharing this stuff with us. We always appreciate when students come.
Let's take a moment and, yeah, say hi. We have some small gifts.
Thank you for coming. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I appreciate this very much. Have a safe trip back home.
Yeah, thank you so much.
And thank you for coming. Ben, congratulations. You're welcome. Taylor?
Nothing can...
Yep, this four laps.
Oh no, I didn't, in the back.
Yeah, in the back.
No, I was so...
I was gonna suggest that, but I didn't know.
Hey, don't always help us. If you see us going astray, let us know.
Yeah, 'cause I think I was the only one with a backpack.
You got it.
I was thinking, do we get two of the teachers, but it's for the other kids. I wonder if we can get more of that one. Do we have any for the teachers? Can we do this? Okay. Alright. That's good.
Yeah, I think that's very...
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Bye!
Thanks, guys.
You guys are all...
Put it together and get a pizza.
That's why we're here.
It's pretty cool. So on to public hearing part of the meeting. And next up is acceptance of money or revenue for the capital project fund.
Sure. So you received a rebate for $45,000 for the installation of the new boilers from Eversource. And so, we are looking to have you approve the receipt of that. And it's planned to be donated as a note returned to the bond.
Return to the bond, okay. Any questions on that? Great.
Sounds great.
I have a motion.
Make a motion to approve applying the revenues to the bond.
Second.
I'll second that.
Just to be clear, it's a capital project fund. It was, now that we've received the bond, it is the fund, but...
Okay. So it's a motion to accept the unanticipated revenue to the capital project fund. Al?
Hi.
Kim?
Aye.
Okay, alright. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next up, we have a, we have a resignation from a, from a school board member, Ingrid. We received recently, Ingrid indicated she's gonna have a busy travel schedule coming up and may not have the time to devote to everything that it takes to do this. And we are gonna miss Ingrid and thank her for all of her work. She did a lot of work with SST over the past year with the policy committee. I guess I'd open it up to the other board members for similar comment.
I appreciate all the work she's done and helped us along the way with her knowledge.
One of the neat, neatest things about Ingrid is, you know, she's an excellent human being and so I'm glad that my, our paths were allowed to cross in this way. But she provided a unique insight of an educator, having, you know, 40-plus years of teaching around the world. And I appreciate that very much and I'm gonna miss having that voice with us.
Same thing. I just really appreciate the educational input. And also sitting next to her, if she could go through my notes sort of, so I could keep up with your kind of... So Kim's gonna have to take that.
Okay, I'll take it.
So so much work goes on behind the scenes that folks don't see. And, you know, we've been going through all these policies and that, Ingrid was on that team and that requires, along with Kim and Meredith, and that requires a lot, a lot of reading, a lot of work, a lot of, a lot of extra meetings. So we really appreciate that. So, where we go from here is we're gonna need to have a replacement. And what I anticipate we're gonna do is open it up. We'll have an open period for solicitation of letters of interest. And we'll have to get a notice out shortly for that and, you know, say a time period. I don't think there's anything said in the rules or anything. I suspect probably a two or three week period might be reasonable, but, you know, if the board has any other thoughts on that?
It's usually about three weeks.
Okay. And so, if it's a board's pleasure, they can put something like that together and get that out maybe over the next week so folks can submit letters of interest. And what would happen under the, under our policies and under the rules is that that person would fill that position until the next town meeting in March, so.
Which works in that case, 'cause that's when the, that term was up, when we started was up, so it works out perfectly.
Right, right. Okay. Then, and the next thing folks have probably heard by now is the superintendent selection. We did put out a press release indicating that Susan Gibbons has accepted an offer to be our next superintendent. She'll be in in July of this year. Between now and then, we'll be working with Susan and Meredith as well on transition. Susan's gonna be in the district a few days. She'll be reading up on district documents and information. So more information to come on that in the coming weeks. Okay, so now, I guess we're on to your report, Meredith.
Okay. So we received notice April 19th that we have been selected for Medicaid audit for this 2017-18 school year. So our social ed department, such as it is, our administrative assistant and our director of student services are working on compiling the information required for that. We're also in the midst of our data security audit as required under HB 1612. That will fold into the governance plan that we expect to present to you later this month as a draft. Our school social worker has put together a parent caregiver connection event for Tuesday, Tuesday? No, Monday, May 13th at 6:00 PM. And that event will feature Peg Dawson, who's well-known in the area for her work around executive functioning. And so that's a great opportunity for parents to come together and learn a little bit about those skills that are really helpful to our young people, but adolescents are still developing. We have currently a balance of about $50,000 in impact fees. That's after the withdrawal that was made earlier this year for bond reimbursement. We have applied for reallocation grants for science and mathematics professional development. And we should have that information for you at the next meeting, whether or not we are going to receive any additional funding for that. Have a few donations to recognize. As I mentioned at our last workshop related to robotics, we received some in-kind donations from Qualcomm and Bosch at the elementary school. That total was $1,517.76. That's for elementary robotics equipment. And then we received an additional $1,080.21 for junior, senior high robotics materials. We received a donation for $500 from NCEP to the Mules Mission at the high school. And QA Cafe LLC also donated $500 to the robotics program. This may be in your report, Caitlin, but the elementary concert, um, chorus concert was this evening, and band is next Wednesday. So usually we hop right the other way around, and I cross things off my list. And we are, um, we'll be working with Samantha to look at, um, future work on culture and diversity. Samantha, again, our social. I think that's it.
Thanks to all of those, um, organizations for those donations. It's, uh, that's really great. Meredith, um, should we sign a letter as the board, or do you get a letter out typically?
I put letters out for all of those. Yep.
Okay, great. Caitlin?
All right, so for the elementary school, the annual Kids' Heart Challenge at the elementary school was held this past Tuesday and was a large success. And the elementary school P T A, Poetry Art Showcase, and Ice Cream Social will be held Wednesday, the fifteenth, from six to eight P M. And at the Newmarket Junior Senior High School, both the high school and middle school student councils teamed up just before April vacation and raised over eight hundred dollars in countless non-perishable food products for Newmarket and sixty-eight Hours of Hunger. They celebrated their success by duct taping Principal Mr. Marzoni to the gymnasium wall at a pep rally on the nineteenth. At this pep rally, the graduating top ten seniors were announced, with the valedictorian and salutatorian of the class of twenty nineteen being Kyle James and Marie Honer. Over April vacation, a handful of Newmarket students, some of which were here tonight, traveled to Scotland and Ireland and returned as well cultured individuals. The Newmarket Middle and High School Student Council were briefed on the late start school day proposals and asked to speak to their peers to gain student perspective. National Honor Society will be holding their semi-annual blood drive at the high school gymnasium next Friday, the tenth, starting at two P M. Community signups for this event can be found at W W W dot redcrossblood dot org. And all fall sports are in full swing. The girls' varsity softball team has a record of one-two, and the boys' varsity baseball team has a record of five-oh, both playing Wilton Limbrow, Limburrow?
Limeboro.
Limeboro High School, um, in Wilton tomorrow at four o'clock. And the coed varsity track team has their next meet at Boe, starting at ten A M. on Saturday. For calendar events, the school board policy meeting will be next Thursday, the ninth, from twelve-thirty to two-thirty P M. There will be a half day for students on May the tenth, and the next school board meeting is scheduled for Thursday, May sixteenth, at seven o'clock.
Is Mr. Marzoni free now?
He is free. Yep.
Great. Do we have photos of this?
We do. They're somewhere. I don't know if they ended up on the internet somewhere. I bet you can find them.
My seventh grader was very excited about the taking of the principal situation.
Thank you, Caitlin. Um, so next is, uh, school board meeting report. Your intended budget.
I commend, uh, yes, I did. And we just went over, um, right-to-know laws, and we are going to meet again to go over next year's schedule.
The policy committee reviewed the policies that we're gonna talk about in a minute, so.
Just a few.
Just a few.
With building committee meeting the other night, Frank, uh, Frank Gregg brought, uh, the building committee up to date on all the projects and, and, uh, basically outlined the fact that, um, we're complying with schedule. And despite a pretty big hiccup, um, laying a sewer line for the elementary school that required, I can't remember, it was two or three sixteen-hour days to move equipment in and, and blast it out of the way. They, they did great on it. I mentioned, uh, to them that the, um, school board was interested in seeing the, the property and the suggestion was made. They thought it was a good one that we hold our next building committee meeting at the schools. And Sean.
I'm so sorry.
And Sean and, uh,
Chris.
Chris will, um, coordinate that.
When's the next one out?
Uh, it's in a couple of weeks.
It's might be on this page.
Uh, May twenty. Yeah, May twenty-first.
May twenty-fourth.
Yeah, hopefully we can, uh, it'll be better weather.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I, is that what Carla's suggestion was? That we, uh, hold it after the building committee meeting.
So you guys will let us know where we should meet, whether it's here and go or whatever.
What time was it?
I'm sorry?
What time was that at?
Whatever the building committee meeting is, five, and it would be after that. And, uh, Sean will get back to us, um, as to where the meeting's gonna be.
So I just, yeah, I just wanted to, um, expand on a little bit of what Al said in terms of the work that happened over April vacation. It was, there was so much going on. They really did a lot. They were literally there and ready to go when kids were, were being let out on that Friday. I mean, literally, they, like, you know, at both schools. And, um, you know, they ran into a, a situation at the elementary school, uh, when they were, folks may recall that there was a sewer line that runs down, I think it's the east hallway, um, that was problematic and needed to be replaced. It's difficult to do. It runs right down the middle of the hallway. And, um, it was decided after consulting with Ekman and, and the engineering folks to, um, terminate the line, put in a partial new rot- line and run it out through one of the existing, uh, classrooms. So essentially what they had to do was bring in an excavator in the school, uh, dig, dig down and, and put in that new line. They ran into solid granite. They didn't know that. So they had folks, I think, some of them in overnight, you know, working on that to get that done, and they worked right through and, uh, were able to get it. You know, it's not finished, finished form, but it's, it's, it's getting there. But they were able to pour the concrete and get things back to, um, operating condition without, you know, interrupting any, any school, which is really appreciated. A lot of folks, you know, driving by, they wouldn't even see it and know that that was going on. But, you know, thanks to, uh, Greg Marles and, and, and all else and who contribute on that. And just a reminder, too, that, um, this, this is a very, this is a very involved project. It is a lot of moving parts to it, and can't thank administration and, um, teachers and, and, and students and parents enough for, for being patient. As, as, as we all know, that you, you can't predict everything that may occur here. But I think folks have done a good job on the fly, um, you know, dealing, dealing with things as they come up, and we, we really appreciate that.
And just one other note, uh, because it's unusual, but our, our fund balance, you know, our, it's the right to know.
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Contingency.
The contingency, okay.
Is not only holding pretty strong, um, but we're beginning to get some credits back. So from last week to this week, it actually went up. So to see a project at this point in that shape, it's just.
Remember, we have a year to go.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're not even halfway.
But the, the, the surprise stuff is, has happened. The majority of it has been site work. So at this point.
Please.
We still have the summer site work at the elementary school, but yes, I, I would agree. The junior, senior high site work is largely complete.
This is like talking about a no-hitter in the eighth inning. Kick you out of the dugout. But, uh, so, uh, yeah, and, and, and also things like that, that, that go unnoticed is like, what we talked about earlier, the forty-five thousand dollars we, we, we got back. I mean, um, that was a, that was a fine, and I, I believe Meredith Gregg, you know, submitted an application, uh, to.
To Eversource, I believe it was.
Yeah, and, um, and so there's just a lot of work that, uh, and, and people started to see, to see the, the fruit of it. But as Meredith pointed out, I think, uh, um, we're heading out to sea now. And it's, you know, there's a lot, lot to, lot to go on this, you know, on this journey, but it'll be worth it. But we just thank people and, um, you know, if, if, as things crop up, we're gonna try to communicate with folks, so they know what's, it's, what's going on as, as quickly as we can. So that's it, I think, for committee reports. And I guess we're on to the draft data governance plan.
Yeah, so I just referenced that in my report, but because we're waiting for the, um, data security audit to complete, I, I have it in draft form, but it's not yet ready for you, because I still have multiple pages of highlights and question marks that need some filling in. So we'll have that for you on the sixteenth, but hope to adopt in June.
High level, Meredith, data security audit, like, who does it? Is it, is it some, is it akin to what our accounting firm, like, do we bring in somebody from the outside?
Correct. Who's doing high level, really looking at what are our practices around data security, interviewing people, looking at our policies, giving sort of a thorough, um, first blush and recommending some action steps to us. The data governance plan itself is pretty specific with respect to what HB sixteen twelve requires. Um, but it includes a team, it includes provisions for training, uh, maintaining an inventory of all, um, uh, basically all software that you use that might, um, uh, have any connection to personally identifiable information.
Right.
It pertains to all of our personnel practices, out of our business office, everything. And that's for students and staff, so. Um, it's fairly involved. The, the plan itself is sort of broad brush of what are our policies, what steps do we have in place, and then there will be some, um, as I think we've talked about before, there will be costs moving forward for some of these pieces to maintain that. And, um, you know, right now, it's another of the many unfunded mandates, um, from the state, but.
What's the history of it? How long have they required this? How many?
This went into effect last year.
Really?
The requirement is to comply by this June. Your data governance plan has to be completed by this June. The draft guidelines weren't adopted until late December.
Wow.
And really not finalized until February. And so there's not a lot of time for people to respond to this. But our, um, I T. folks around the state have been collaborating to sort of step up to this. Our, the C T O organization, Chief Technology Officer Organization statewide, has worked across the region as well. Massachusetts is a bit ahead of New Hampshire on this front. And so there is other work nationally to access, um, but it's been a, a, a big lift for, for folks at the local level.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. So we have a first reading of several policies.
Um, I will, before we get into the meat of it, you know, based upon Joanne's comment, I suggest that the policy committee takes another look at one A, if that's the board's pleasure for us to do next week in our meeting.
To bring in to this century.
Yeah.
Policy I F?
I A.
I, I A.
Okay, I was gonna, where's I A?
The one that Joanne spoke to at the.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll take that back.
Okay, so it, can I just say, um, I have a question on it. On, it's I F. Are you just gonna take the whole thing back and look at it?
No, I'm just taking I, I A.
I had a question on I F.
Okay.
So, and again, it's, it says underneath it, it's my priority required by law. This is me coming from school board member volunteer. I have a question. I see number six is crossed out, the provision of accelerated instruction as needed. Now, does that mean we don't, we won't allow kids to accelerate? Or we don't have to let kids accelerate? What does that mean and why is it crossed out?
Meredith, what discussion did we have about that?
Uh, I'm happy to answer that.
Because I, because we talked about it.
Thank you for, for looking in my direction. We did, I don't, I don't think it was intentional. Um, I actually met with the association earlier today, um, a- about this group of policies or with association leadership, and that was one of our conversations. I think it was an inadvertent omission, that and the sentence that follows, actually.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, 'cause I have no notes online.
Do we wanna pull that one, too?
Yeah, they're, they're all first reads, so you're not adopting them anyway. This is really our opportunity in commenting feedback.
Yep.
Okay.
So right now I have I A. going back and I F. going back, or, yeah, for further review.
And my other one.
What's the other one?
I G A.
You didn't say that one.
No, I'm saying it now. Sorry. Um, I have a couple. I was actually up late on the plane reading these things. So, um, I G A. I see that it says Director of Curriculum and Construction, Instruction is crossed out, and Superintendent's in there. Is that because we do not currently have a Director of Curriculum, or?
Yes.
So should we put that back in and say, or Superintendent? Or somehow, in case we end up with, back with a Director of Curriculum?
I, I mean, I think the superintendent can still spearhead it and designate that to anyone they so choose.
And we could always, I suppose amend that policy.
Well, that's what I was thinking, too, but I just wanted to ask the question.
So we'll, we'll leave that one as is for now?
This one doesn't have my page. And then I have, um, eleven B. I, I I B. I I B. My notes are so horrible. I just, I can't find it.
Class size.
Class size. So we, it says twenty-five, we, and I'm wondering, because we've had this problem before, where we, the policy said twenty-five, we wanted smaller. Do we make that size smaller? 'Cause right now we have a, a gym class. Well, that's just because of construction, but it's forty kids. We have a couple of classes that are a little bit high. So I'm wondering if we can, if we have twenty-five, we can keep those high classes. I would like to keep those to eighteen to twenty.
I, these are fair points. I just, that seems, um, this whole thing to me, and I, you know, I don't profess to know what's best for, you know, in terms of that. It seems like a, a good topic to discuss, um, and, you know, probably a deeper one than just, you know, around here.
Well, we've dealt with it before, that's why I thought, huh, it was a good one to bring up.
Yeah, so I think, you know, the board may choose to, you know, sort of carve that out as an issue to, to look at down, down the road here.
Well, I want to do it before we make it a policy.
Right, but I, I guess what I'm saying, and just, this is, this proposing is, is that, um, I don't know what, what four of us are gonna do in terms of adding substance to that, you know what I mean? Like, in terms of expertise. And so we may want to consult on that.
And I, and that's what happened in this case. There was consultation. I mean, it wasn't like Ingrid and I came up with these sizes, 'cause we don't know.
No, 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 right. And that's not, not what I'm saying now.
No, 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 no. I'm just saying.
But so who was the consultation with administration? Was it with Meredith?
It's the School Board Association guidance, and it's based on state regulations.
I read that. I read that. And so, but again, that's for our school. One, something that we've talked about over time is that we like our small sizes. And again, if we put twenty-five in there, then we have that policy. When Elizabeth says, I don't like the class of twenty-seven in the English room, I haven't, I don't have a leg to stand on as a parent, as a student, if there's that number twenty-five, you know?
I mean, I, I think it definitely, to Mike's point, is a larger situation. 'Cause I think we have to look at, it, it's a whole thing beyond just the size. There are fiscal implications with it, all sorts of other things. Staff, you know, staffing issues, all things that come into play that I think I would feel that I need more input on.
Me, me too. I mean, it's, it's not a, it's a fair issue to bring up, and I, I, I get where you're going. But I think it may be part of a larger strategic revisioning, you know, issue as well, you know? And, um, I'm sure there's lots more that I don't know, but I should know, uh, before I, I can really, I could weigh, weigh in on it meaningfully. Uh, but I, your, your concern, Elizabeth, I guess, is, is basically having enough attention, you know, per student, teacher to student. That's the issue, right? Yeah.
So I, and, and also class size. Some of our rooms don't hold twenty-five. So, I mean, we, we do have this bright, shiny new addition, but we still have some small classrooms.
So again, in, in considering a policy like this, um, they're always amenable to change, you know, down the road.
I don't, I don't wanna have that in writing, in stone, as a policy, because it just, we're stuck. So I think.
What would you think?
I, if you guys wanna talk to administration, if you wanna talk to the principals, the vice principals, and just, maybe I'm wrong. Again, I don't know. I'm speaking what I think is a good class size for this district.
And I think, Elizabeth, one thing that we have to think about is, as Mike was sort of alluding to also, this policy could be adopted today in this form. But then, a month from now, we determine that something requires a change in it, and we can then change it, do a first reading of it, do it again. So it's not like, even if it's set in stone, it's not, it's still a fluid document.
You also, as you have with other policies in recent months, table it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So let's do that.
I, I'd be really comfortable with that.
I think so. I mean, I think, I think, I think Elizabeth raises a fair point, but I can't wait. I'd only be guessing at this point. Where, where July? Any, any others?
So if I am, just to review, we're gonna table class size I I B. We are gonna take another look at I D A, I F C, and I A. Is that, are those the ones?
I G A.
Yep, I G A, I F, and I A.
Yes.
Okay.
And I have one note from the association regarding I H B C A, but it's changing an and to an and or.
Okay.
I can share that at the committee meeting.
Okay. I H, which one is?
I H B C A.
I H B C A, okay. Ah, yes, okay.
You know, does that constitute a first reading?
It does.
Okay. So we've already done the acceptance of the forty-five. And then, um, next we're on to, um, actually skipped over this. Approval of minutes, those are probably midway in your back.
Yeah, halfway.
Actually, yeah, kind of towards the end.
April eleven?
Uh, eleven, it's the first. There's, there's several. Oh, we were busy.
We've been busy.
So what's, so fifteen, maybe two?
So fifteen, eighteen?
Yeah, these were sent out earlier, so probably already, so, but.
I have to, I was not here for the eighteenth, so. I can't.
Make it more secure, September nineteenth, April eleventh, two thousand nineteen.
I don't, yeah, she doesn't have the other one, so.
Oh, I know, I just, I can't, I can't vote on that, but he did April eleventh, twenty nineteen, I second that.
I'm sorry. Do we wanna do the whole slate and then?
I would say, say do all of them, but eighteen. Al, if you do fifteen.
I'll, I'll amend that to both eighteen.
Eleven.
Fifteen and eighteen.
Twenty.
Ten.
No, not eighteen, twenty instead of eighteen, I hope it's not, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna do eighteen separately.
Okay.
I, I second that.
Okay, any changes or notes, if not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and a motion on the.
I move that we accept the regular, eh, business meeting and non-public meeting minutes from April twenty, April eighteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Any questions or changes?
I abstain.
One abstention, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's, so we have a, a second reading of the policies. Any further questions on the ones before us, they're again, they're, they're contained in the packet, and we see them previously?
I don't have any questions.
If, if there are any questions, Alex is still looking, then, if no questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I, um, I move, if I get the right word, that we approve the, uh, policies listed as for second reading in this agenda.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think that brings us to the end.
We have a couple of items for non-public, that are in the chair folder.
So, um.
Oh, do you wanna read the manifests too?
We need to do manifest, Mike.
We need to do manifests.
True.
We have you doing.
Okay, anyone see, I don't think I've ever seen, did you sign them?
Yes, I did.
Um, if you wanna do a motion.
All right, I seek a motion to approve the total manifests of four hundred sixty-three thousand eighty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents.
I second that.
Any questions on the manifests? All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, I'd like to, uh, request a motion to enter into non-public, uh, session pursuant to R. S. A. ninety-one A., colon, three, sub, subsection C.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, on a roll call vote, Ms. Bizink?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Aye.
Ms. McKinnney?
Aye.
Aye. We're in non-public.